Good evening. Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee, May 9th, 2023, in the Town Hall. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Erin DeMillo?
Present.
Wally McKenzie?
McKenzie, yes. Here, present.
Sparrow Thomo said he couldn't come. Kathy Lapiore?
Present.
Tim Messier said he couldn't come. Andrew Murch?
Present.
Martina Shea, present. We have a quorum. Because I have come to depend on Don Nico to get me the agendas and the minutes, we will not have approval of the minutes tonight. I do have a copy and I will see to it that everybody gets a copy for the next meeting. I have to thank the Town Hall, all the employees in the Town Hall, all the tech people, all the cable people, for allowing us to use the building on such short notice. It's been kind of a roller coaster. We were supposed to have the meeting at the high school, but it had to be changed, so they just stepped up to the plate and got us all ready. Citizens Forum? I hear any comments? No comments. Receivers announcements. Dr. Valar will not be with us this evening, so there will be no receivers announcements. We were supposed to have a presentation from the high school and from the academy, but neither Principal Rains nor Principal Guarini are going to be here, so there will be no presentation. Hopefully, next week, in our June meeting, we'll have enough time to have one in this calendar year. Chairman's announcements. We have a candidate's forum coming up this week. Please attend it, because we have some pretty impressive candidates running for school committee and town council. For our school committee, we're going to have Tim Messier, Carla de la Cruz de Villa, and Andrew Murch is going to be running for town council. We may lose him from the school committee, that will not be very good. And another new candidate, Stephen Kabinsky. We wish all of the candidates who are running for both school committee and town council good luck, and we really appreciate your stepping up to help our community. Graduation, June 9th, at Mayanfield. Can you imagine that? We're already at graduation. Please put it on your calendar. School committee does go to graduation. Our election day is June 13th, so we're going to be having our school -- next school committee meeting will probably be June 6th, probably before the election. Great news for the rest of the kids. June 20th is the last day of school. It's kind of funny this year, because we have that new holiday, June 19th, so they'll be off on Monday, June 19th, go back to school for a half a day on the 20th. And our reorganization meeting will be in July, with some new candidates that we're going to elect. Okay?
Madam Chair, may I make a motion?
Just one second.
Sure.
May I be sure I have everything I need to do? Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to add an agenda item, a committee forum, and give us an opportunity to speak.
Do I have a second? I have a second? All in favor? It's unanimous. We'll start off with Andrew, since you made the motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. As a lot of you and the public are aware, I have not been able to attend these school committee meetings as of late, because they've been scheduled during the work hours, 4:00. I work in Westboro, I work till 5:30. I'm darn sure I'm not one of the only parents in this community, and this isn't reflection on you, Madam Chair, this is more on the receiver, who has been kind of guiding all the presentations and when these times are. So with that being said, it doesn't -- this year, and again, not to any control of the school committee, but it seems to me like this year, Dr. Valar has been -- Dr. Valar has seemed to cut the community out from interacting with the school committee and the school district by scheduling these meetings. This is a town that is primarily made up of low to median income residents, people that work one to two, sometimes even three jobs. And I work one, my wife works one, but scheduling a meeting at 4:00 randomly throughout the town, though impressive and endearing as having it at schools is, I don't understand where the decision is made that we cannot schedule these meetings after the workday to have staff make the presentations as they should. And given the situation involved tonight, I think, at least me personally, it seems like Dr. Valar doesn't really want to work with the community much further. And as a parent, that's disappointing. At this point, I'm speaking more as a parent, more than as a school committee member, because I work 60 hours a week, I've got to provide for my wife and kid, and I should have a right to speak about how this school system is operating and what I would like to see improved, be it behind this dais or behind that podium. And there have not been granted that opportunity, because the state-appointed receiver has decided to schedule it at inconvenient times, to not let the working public be able to come in and speak. And then, to have the wherewithal to try to cancel this meeting, and then tell the school committee, who oversees the district, when in a normal circumstance, that we cannot have that meeting on school property, on school grounds, as it was originally scheduled and intended. And this being literally an 11th hour and 59th minute change, because of how a meeting went with certain members of this committee. I have sat up here for the last four years as a member of this school committee, trying to get people to look at the positives and try to develop a working relationship with this receiver, because I felt that it was the only way that we could continue to move Southbridge Schools forward. This school year, and the actions of this receiver as of this year, as a parent, I'm not buying into his program anymore. And I am a person that is very, very hard to make angry. And I am angry. I am livid, and I am speaking for a lot of parents who have spoken the same, that they don't have the opportunity to speak. I told as many parents as I could to come tonight. I didn't know the meeting was tonight, I thought it was today, at 4:00, at Cole Ave. An 11th hour change, because you had your feelings hurt because of the way a discussion went, is not how you run anything, a business, a school district, or a government. So this needs to be heard, that the state-appointed receiver has alienated the parents of this community, willingly. And if you cannot -- I don't care what positive behavioral interventions and supports, and how he's changed the climate and culture, if you don't have the community buying into your program, and you're not working with us, no one's going to help you. And that's why we are still where we are now, because you alienated the other half of your team. The school district is on offense to make sure that these kids learn, get a good education, in a safe and friendly learning environment, and grow up to be mature, contributing members of society. The defense is us at home as parents. We're the ones that have to continue those moral lessons and make sure that they are continuing their schoolwork, and aid in any way we can to make sure that our students, our kids, are learning, and then we pass it back off to the offense the very next day. The defense has walked out on this school district, parents are fed up, the town is fed up. And I'm going to be honest, if the receiver decides not to show up to this June 9th meeting, you are -- he's not doing himself any favors, and he preaches communication and teamwork yet. I don't see him today, I haven't seen him in a while, and my emails have gone unanswered, as a parent and as a member of this board. So I believe, and I hope that this can motivate everybody here on this board, this is our school district, this is our school committee, whether or not we have power and authority is one thing, but we have power of the voice and we have power of the people. And I think as a committee, whether, as Ms. Martina led to earlier, yes, I am running for town council, but at the end of the day, right now, I'm a member of the school committee. And it's up to us to lead this community, to make sure that at the end of the day, this receivership has ended, it has ended as painless as possible, and that we get the community to support this school committee, our school district, and our town. And the town council does have a responsibility, but now is the time that all of us get out there, boots on the ground, talking to parents, talking to stakeholders in this community, and getting everybody riled up. We need to rally the people to take back our district and to be involved. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murch. Wally, do you want to be next, you have something to say?
Not really.
Not really? Kathy?
Yes. I was at that meeting last Friday morning. I was asked to go, so I had some questions for the receiver, and he's not really crazy about answering questions directly, but I persisted. I spoke about this at the town council meeting last night, because he had some comments that were not very nice about the town council, being like a Charlie Brown and Lucy show. They were not happy hearing that, but he said it, and I figured I would pass that on. He asked me why I wanted to be on the school committee, maybe figuring I wouldn't have an answer. I did. I said, "It's because I care about the kids in the community, the schools, and our town." He asked what I've accomplished. So I said, "I listen to people, and if I hear concerns, I bring them forward to the school committee, to try to help with anything that comes along." Let's see. He cut the meeting short. I had other things to ask him, but I guess he had had enough of me asking things and not just sitting there saying, "Okay, you don't have to answer these." That's not who I am. If I believe in something, I'm going to work hard for it. So that's when he announced he would not be coming to any more school committee meetings, and he was done with that. So I'm not sure why someone would be here, who is supposed to be helping with the school system, and he refuses to work with us. I don't know. It doesn't make any sense at all. So I feel like it's kind of a waste of time. I guess that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Erin, you had something you wanted to say?
Yes, I do. And probably, before I go too far, I should just mention that I was also at that school committee meeting, I mean, at the meeting with Dr. Valar, and it is definitely possible to have different perspectives on a meeting, and so I guess I would have to just mention that my perspective of the meeting was a little bit different than other members of the school committee, and that's all I'll say about that for right now. But I did ask if I could say something, just in response to some of the things that I've observed the last couple weeks in talking to people within the community, as well as from some of the town council meetings that I had watched, and some of these things I have mentioned to other members of our school committee as well. But I'd just like to clarify that the perspective that I'm giving right now is mine. I'm not necessarily trying to speak on behalf of the committee, this is just my observations and opinions. One thing that I've noticed in the past as well, but even more over the last few weeks, is a little bit of a tendency for us as a community to think or to talk as if getting off the receivership were kind of a magic wand that would make all of our problems go away. And I've heard people comment that if we were off the receivership, we wouldn't have such high teacher turnover, or our MCAS scores would go up, or their kids wouldn't get in trouble at school, or that we wouldn't have weapons in the school, or things like that, harassment, bullying, you name it. I've heard many different things mentioned. And I don't think we really consciously believe that everything's just magically going to get better, I think. But we just have to, I would like to remind us that that would be kind of an unrealistic expectation to put on the school committee, once we move off the receivership. If people are thinking that we're never going to make mistakes, or that nothing bad will ever happen in our schools, once we have a more active authoritative school committee, I'm pretty sure they're going to be disappointed. Also, when we get off the receivership and hire our own superintendent, that kind of thinking would be a big pressure and an unrealistic expectation to put on that new superintendent as well. Once we get off the receivership, we will still have problems, but in a sense, we'll have more ownership of those problems as a community and as a school committee, and I do think that's actually a good thing. But I just want to make sure that we're prepared for the reality that problems will still come. The second thing I noticed is that it might be good to remind ourselves of what exactly getting off the receivership would accomplish. And my understanding of the situation is that getting off the receivership, first of all, means having a more active and involved school committee. I am definitely in favor of the school committee being more active and involved, but over the last couple of weeks, I've realized that I'm not sure the community, or even the town council, realized that we were taking baby steps toward becoming a more active, functional school committee. It was slow, and it sometimes felt like three steps forward and two steps back, but it did seem like we were finally making some noticeable progress. A number of us were having meetings with Dr. Valar that involved ideas shared, they involved plans made, suggestions given, et cetera. At the end of our meeting in March, we had talked about collaboration and support of Dr. Valar. And those words may have sounded to some people like just words, you know, something nice you say to make everybody feel good, but to a number of us, they weren't. Collaboration with Dr. Valar was becoming a reality. Things were beginning to look much more functional, to me, my opinion again, than they had in a while. For example, even after the press release that came out about the weapon in the high school, I met with Dr. Valar the next day. He showed me the crisis plan, it seemed like a good policy, it was up to date. I did ask whether all the teachers and administration would be familiar with the plan, and he said that all the teachers who are hired at the beginning of the year go through training before school starts, and that the crisis plan would be included in that training. Staff that's hired during the year, however, wouldn't have the same opportunity to be familiar with that plan. So we talked through some ideas of how that could be improved in the future. We talked about possibly some online trainings that they would have to interact with and things like that. We talked about possibly including it in a packet that they could be responsible for, et cetera. I also asked whether teachers felt like they'd been adequately communicated with regarding the incident, and whether there could be improvements made in that direction. That was another discussion that we had. Basically, I felt like I was asking questions that the community would want an active school committee to be asking. Because of some of the things that have been said and done since that time, honestly, I'm not sure we're in that same place anymore. We may be starting kind of from ground zero again. The last thing that I observed over the past few weeks is that I felt like one of the main reasons people wanted us to get off the receivership, specifically right now, is that they wanted the school committee to have the authority to fire the administrator, whether the school committee even thought that was the right thing to do or not. Now, obviously, I'm one of seven. Any decision that were made in a functional school committee would have to be made by a majority of the committee, but it would have to be a rational, thought-through decision, not something that we're all pressured to by people who haven't stopped to think through all the details and find out all the facts. I felt that if we had been a fully authoritative school committee over the last few weeks, we would have been under intense pressure to get rid of Dr. Valar. And the thing is, that if we established that knee-jerk reaction policy of firing the administrator every time there's a problem, and I'm not saying that that would necessarily happen, but it could lead to that, then no one will want to work for us once we get off the receivership. It would be next to impossible to find a superintendent who wants to work for a district that fires the superintendent every time something bad happens, because bad things will happen. And if we have a school committee that's actually willing to sit down and have a conversation with our administrators, and help them work through problems in a wise, level-headed manner, that will make it so much easier to find a good superintendent when the time comes. And we will need a good superintendent. Our kids deserve that. And it still won't be easy, but hopefully easier. I know that we already have put the plan in motion as a town to vote on whether or not we want to get off the receivership. Honestly, I think basically everyone in our town who knows what a receivership is wants to get off of it. That, to me, really is not the question. The question is, how are we going to get off the receivership, and when? Personally, I would like to get off the receivership as soon as it can be done well. I would like to accomplish that by building bridges with Dr. Valar, so that he will help us become the school committee we need to be in order to successfully function. That would include some of the things we were committing to back in March, increasing collaboration, increasing transparency, increasing support on our part of the schools and administration, so by the school committee and others in town, so that we can actually accomplish the goals of the receivership and then be done with it. Hopefully, with a school committee that's already, at that point, mostly functional, so that the transition to home rule could be smooth and seamless. One last comment is that I did appreciate the fact that some of our town councillors mentioned that it would have been good to talk with the school committee, like officially, before taking the step of putting a school-related item on the June ballot. We do need additional collaboration and communication between the school committee and the town council, and maybe that's something that we can put some thought into for the future.
Thank you, Erin.
I do notice that we do have a few people in the audience. We have a problem when we are here by ourselves. As a school committee, usually the doors are locked, and we were not expected to be here tonight, so no one gave us the passcodes. So unfortunately, the door was locked, which technically, I suppose, makes this an illegal meeting, but does any, can I extend the citizens' forum?
Can I make a motion to go back to the previous agenda item, citizens' forum?
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Does anyone from the audience have anything they want to say?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. And yes, luckily, it was only me out there trapped, so I won't file no complaint. But no, I wanted to thank you all for allowing me the time to speak. First, oh, yes, thank you. I always forget. Jackie Ryan, 262 Hamilton Street, I am also a member of the Southridge Town Council. I just want to first thank all of you for being here tonight. I know it got moved around and all over the place, but I appreciate it being moved to this time. Personally, it's only the only time I can really make meetings. Anything earlier than 6:00 is a little hard for most people working. I just wanted to say thank you personally to all of you. I understand what you all have been through, having sat in those chairs, and I just want to thank you all for having a robust discussion about this and about that meeting, because there's been so much discussion, and I appreciated hearing from both of you, because it's really insightful to have both sides, or anything, to help make a well-rounded opinion. I appreciate Ms. Lapiore coming to the meeting last night and letting us know her experience, and I appreciated hearing Mr. Mello's experience. It helps make my opinion more well-rounded, when I do have to make decisions pertaining to the school system, which are limited. I just wanted to say that I wish we could have more time with Dr. Valar. I've outreach myself, I have some concerns. Whether or not those concerns are accurate or warranted, there's still concerns and perceptions we, as a community, need to head off and face on, because at some point, perception becomes reality. And it's important for all of us to head off and be open and forthright with these discussions when incidents happen, and not vague, so that way we can have really thoughtful discussions. My problem was with the lack of detail, personally. I thought it was a much less severe situation than what had occurred, because of the lack of detail. And a lot of people in this community felt the same way. So what I ask from not only you guys, because you guys do a pretty good job of being open and transparent, but from Dr. Valar, is that continued need to be continually more transparent about things that happen, especially when it comes to people's kids. A lot of this could have been headed off if there had been more direct and forthright communication. So I thank you all for having this discussion and moving this meeting to a more reasonable time and being here. I really appreciate it. I know a lot of people watching at home and here today appreciate it. Thank you.
Would it be appropriate to ask questions?
Yes.
Just wondering whether, trying to think of how to even ask this question. For instance, when we, as a school committee, have the opportunity to meet with Dr. Valar, obviously, he's busy. If you met with every person, every teacher, every community member, one-on-one, that would take all of his time, and he would have no time for the school. But would it be helpful to the town council if we had a time during our school committees where we report on meetings and discussions that we have with Dr. Valar, so that people are aware that, okay, we did meet with him, we did get that detail, he may not have time to sit down and go through that detail with everyone, and that way, it would be sort of a channel that we could get a little bit better communication kind of flowing? Does that seem like?
That seems like a worthwhile endeavor. I would, I'll personally advocate to the town council chairman, Mr. Daniel, to have an agenda item, whether that be monthly or bimonthly, at whatever pace the school committee feels comfortable giving reports, because I think that's really important. One of my things in why I've tried to, early on, come here and try to be here and be present while I, before I had my medical leave, was because I wanted to work on building that relationship and that communication, because that was one of the things cited in the turnaround plan, was the lack of communication and workings between the school committee and the council. So I was like, I want to come here, and I want to work on this, because I want to be collaborative. I actually do want to see you guys get power and be ready to take power back. So I would, I'll personally appeal to the chairman on that in fact.
And I know it's not always easy for me personally to be able to make it to a town council meeting. A lot of times, I'll watch them later or something like that, especially if there's something relevant to the school committee. But would it be possible for us to have an item agenda passably, to just kind of report even to ourselves? It's not easy for us to communicate within ourselves as a body, but do you think it would meet that need if we actually had an item on our agenda that whoever had met with the receiver that month could say, "Hey, I met with the receiver, here are some of the things that we went through," and then maybe you, as a town council, could kind of follow up on that? of follow up on that and just try to touch base with some of the things that had been shared at our meeting even?
I, I think there's, obviously, with Members Forum, that would have been where I would have suggested something like that come up, now that that's gone. My suggestion, yeah, would be have something specifically on the agenda of like updates from the committee from the receiver, or information from the committee from the receiver, something like that, where if you got information that you feel is valuable to disclose to the community from the receiver, you're doing so in an open and transparent way that's not violating open meeting law. Because I think that's the main concern with Members Forum, is it's so vague, it violates the open meeting law, because you have no idea what could be brought up or discussed. But if you put something specific on the agenda saying like, hey, school committee member updates pertaining to conversation with the receiver, or something to that effect, yeah, that would be allowed.
Something more specific.
Yeah. And that would allow for you guys to have a discussion about some of the things that are coming up. Maybe we all are missing pieces here and there of things that are happening within the district, both good and bad, and that we've all met with Villar. I think that's a really great idea, because it also helps produce, as a committee, for you the ability to have people who are like, oh, I also met with the receiver to discuss something, and maybe I can come here and speak to the school committee while they're discussing this and help inform them. So I think that would be a really productive way to start that conversation.
Okay. I, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask another question. Listen, one more, okay. And that, or maybe, maybe it's more of a comment, and that is, I, I know I've known people in the past and had friends in the past who are in a very difficult police investigation, and that situation has kind of informed my perspective a little bit more on the weapon in the school situation that we just had, and realizing how difficult it is when you've been told that you're not allowed to share much information because it's an active investigation, and not only an active investigation that you don't want to jeopardize, but that there are also rights of a minor involved who's in this situation. And so to at least be willing in our minds to say, okay, for Dr. Villar to take a little bit of time to make sure that that investigation has had time to unfold, and that we actually know the facts, and that we actually know what we can say and what we can't say before we share everything with the public, and just to at least, in our minds, give a little bit of, of grace and be willing to be a little bit patient, which is frustrating. I hate being patient. That is not one of my strong points at all. And I don't think most of us it is, especially when it comes to a situation like this where you're talking about kids and safety, and teachers and their safety, and yet to be willing to recognize, okay, this is something that we, we actually have to at least show a little bit of patience with and a little bit of understanding of what an investigation like that could look like.
I, I don't disagree with that sentiment. I think the problem, again, was with how that was communicated. I think part, and this is just coming from my HR conflict resolutions background, right? Part of the way you deal with that is by assembling all the details, but also providing those details, especially to the victim in that situation of like, okay, this is what happened, this is the thought process, and providing as much details as you can with the promise that once the investigation is done, that you're really forthright and honest and go through detail by detail, and be ready for parent questions, be ready for council questions, be ready for school committee questions, right? These are questions, these are, my perspective is that we could have headed this off better and avoided this whole controversy if we had just been really thoughtful and more, a little more forthcoming. I understand there's minor rights involved, but there's also public safety concerns that have to be taken into account, and there's ways to do that without revealing identifying information that may pertain to the individual themselves that may be a minor. So that's just from my experience. I, I just felt like the, the statement was a little more vague, and I think they just need to be more thoughtful about being more detail-oriented and also be really prone to trying to give updates whenever they can, if they do have confirmed concrete information.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor.
Let me ask counselor two questions. If you don't mind, I know you're a busy person.
I'll just stand here, wait.
So I'm, I'm going to try to give you a little throwback here. I need you to remember the time you were sitting behind here with us. When I was elected in 2019, you were the chairman, or the chairperson of the school committee, rather, I do apologize, chairperson of the school committee. And you had dedicated your term to try to develop a relationship, a working relationship and teamwork with Dr. Villar.
Yes.
From your perspective at that time, towards the beginning of your tenure as chair, did it seem like you were having a collaborative and developing working relationship?
I had a collaborative and developing relationship, but there were roadblocks that became immediately noticeable, that were like lines that there were, there was no way to negotiate on. One of my big things was negotiating training, for example, working with MAS-C to help provide that training, and also having subcommittees, so that way we could get information as a, at the time, a school committee member, to understand what's happening. Part of why I feel, in my personal opinion, you all aren't ready, is because you don't have enough information. You haven't been immersed in the subcommittees and really developing those core skills you get in those meetings, right? So my thought process was I wanted to get that off the ground. And then first, you was amenable to that. Unfortunately, as you all know, you're a committee of seven, and when some members start getting a little more vocal, it can be really hard as times, when you're, especially when you're chairman, and I'm sure Mr. Shea understands, to really negotiate that path, because there's already that, there was already that fear of, or worry that there was workings against the receivership, and that worry tainted already hard situation, and when those comments came to light, it just made it really hard to continue. And it was productive first. Tried really hard. I got them back a couple of times, and unfortunately, it just, certain things were not being met, and the relationship unfortunately devolved, and it seems to be unfortunately a common occurrence.
So one last question. Now that you are an elected town counselor, and you have served on EHS, do you feel that you currently have a working relationship with Dr. Villar? And if so, is it better or worse than your working relationship when you were on the school committee? And I do have, I do want to say that I do have a comment after your answer, just because there's reasons why I'm asking this question.
I think overall, my working relationship has been a little bit better. I think partly because I do have some authority and oversight as a counselor. With that comes a little bit more of a respect with the position, and I think that, that has worked out. We've had our issues, we've had our fights, and there was one incident in which I had to hold them to account on the budget for transparency. But overall, that process actually led, even though it was a hard moment, to a much more transparent process, and actually, the last two times the budgets come through, I've supported it, no problems, because he met, he actually started working with us and working collaboratively with us instead of it being a one-size-fits-all. He understood our role. And that was part of why, when I was on the school committee, I was trying to work to give some little authority, if it was little, just to help give that air of respect, and like, we're a public body meant to serve the public interest. And having us on the same page and understanding what happens helps us be better arbiters of the change that's happening. If we don't understand what's happening, if we don't collaboratively work together, if we don't actually negotiate in good faith, it makes it hard to actually make long-term, sustainable change. And, yeah, I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you very much. The reason why I asked these questions is because I've been on this, I started meeting with Dr. Villar when I was just a parent. I had an issue with my son's IEP, wasn't getting answered. I went up to the top. It worked out as a parent. As a school committee member, much to the chagrin of the chair at the time that I was elected, I met with Dr. Villar and tried to develop a working relationship on my own accord, because I had seen through previous meetings and comments that it didn't seem like there was a lot of respect for the committee as a group of passionate individuals who care and who just want to make change. It didn't seem like that. And again, I allude to the, the phrase, perception is reality. As a parent, as somebody who was attending meetings before I was elected, that's the way it seemed. So I needed to make sure that I was getting, I was making the right conclusion. On the board? Yeah, I was able to get a little bit more meetings with Dr. Villar as a member, and when I became chairman, those dwindled, that working relationship. I was able to get training from MAS-C. Thanks for the push. I do appreciate it. That was your, that was your doing, so I do appreciate that. I got a push, but the relationship again devolved. I'm one that tries to find the gold in the dirt of any relationship, because there's always common ground somewhere, that gold nugget that can make us successful. At the end of the day, and at the end of all this, after four years serving on this board in multiple different capacities, as vice chair to, current chair Shea, as the chair as well, and as just a member, I've seen this relationship devolve, and I'm sorry, I can't stay quiet. His action, his words, though, in the public eye and put on Facebook and social media, and only when he decides to show himself to EHS or the town council, does it seem like he wants to have that collaborative relationship? And behind closed doors, it does seem the same way. But your actions in the public eye, his actions in the public eye just aren't showing it. I'm sorry. We can't get anywhere as a school committee with Dr. Villar as a whole if he doesn't respect us as a whole. You can't respect individuals. You have to respect us as a whole. And I have absolute love and admiration for what Ms. DeMello and Ms. LaPriore have done over the last year to try to develop that working relationship, and I can honestly say they've worked harder than I have, and they've done a phenomenal job. And I am so glad that you guys stepped up a couple of years ago, that we, you were elected, we got you appointed after a second round, and I'm so happy that you guys are here, because you guys mean it. You guys actually mean it from the heart. But Dr. Villar can't just meet and work with two of us. It has to be all of us. And his, his words are, words are empty. I can use AI now, ChatGPI, and create words, and it doesn't matter. His actions need to speak louder. The fact that he's not here, the fact that he's consistently scheduled meetings outside of workout, in, during work hours where people can't show up, is purposeful, because he doesn't want to hear criticism. And I'm going to call it out, because I'm sick and tired of this as a parent. My son is struggling. He's at a fourth grade reading level with an appointed IEP in an eighth grade. He's at a sixth grade level with math and appointed IEP. And I've asked, oh, we're working hard to develop our special education system, and we're working diligently, and there's a staff shortage. And I completely understand that. So what can we do? Nothing. I'm just, I'm just so tired, as a parent and as a member of this board, of the lead that we keep giving him. And at the end of the day, he's the one that's accountable. He's the one that runs the show. Regardless, he's the one that runs the show, and he's the face of this board, or face of this district. And if he can't meet with us or respect us as a committee, how in blue blazes can we expect counselors to come and work with us if he can't respect us? And how can we expect the community to buy in? I'm just, I'm sick and tired of it. This needs to change, and the community, the committee, and the council need to start holding him accountable, because he needs to work with us. You don't get to pick and choose. Just because you are the committee doesn't mean you get to pass us off.
Thank you. Andrew? Anybody else? Wally?
Yes, I'll try to be brief.
No one's been be brief tonight.
Okay. In regards to the school committee's relationship with the receiver, Dr. Villar, I think it's been a seesaw kind of a relationship, and I think it's because the school committee itself is not unified. And I think what we really need to do, and there are five people here of which four may disagree with me, but that's okay, because this is only an opinion. But I believe that Dr. Villar will work with those who will work with him and who are looking to cooperate with him. He is training us. We are not training him. And what we really need to do is not necessarily look for him to be our best buddy, or not to look to him to answer all of our questions and, and everything else, although he, it would be nice if he did, because then we'd be able to feel more comfortable, I guess. But we are a non-voting committee as far as power goes, as far as decisions go. We're in training, and he has offered up various programs through the schools to show us what's going on and what is being done, and how we can learn from this, these school meetings. I agree with Andrew Murch that it's difficult. If you're going to have 12 meetings a year, having four of them in the schools, you're only going to have eight, and it's not enough. Maybe we really need to look at either having more meetings or having less school meetings or meetings at the schools. We don't have to go to every single school. We have a podium here, and I think would not be a bad idea if we invited the principals to come here and make a presentation. And this way, parents could come and sit in the audience and find out what's going on when the school's there. I'm not saying that's the right thing, but I, I just noticed that every time we start to take two steps forward, we are taking a step back. And if Dr. Villar says he is no longer interested in coming to our school committee meetings, we need to look at why. And I got a feeling that if we're going to be attacking him, I don't know, I would not put my head in a lion's den and see what the lion's going to do. Lion will bite my head off, and we don't need to be biting his head off. We need to approach him with questions on a respectful, tactful way and work together. If you don't like what he's saying, say, excuse me, sir, could I meet with you another time to discuss this? Because I don't want to make a big issue here in front of the public. We need to work together, and I've always maintained that, until the school committee works together. And what I would suggest, and no disrespect to Kathy or to Erin, or even to myself, because I've done it. I've had meetings with Dr. Villar, and I don't know if it's a good idea for me to have a private meeting with Dr. Villar. I think what I should do is come to the school committee and say, I'm planning on having a meeting with Dr. Villar. Would anyone like to come along with me? That leaves the door open, there's no privacy, and there's no, there's no confusion. So I'm asking that we work together, try to get Dr. Villar to appreciate our desire, as Andrew said, we're here because we care. And because we care, we can use that caring as a olive branch to Dr. Villar. And in turn, I know that this man will meet with us, but we can't jump on him. He doesn't seem to work well that way, we've seen in the past, and so therefore, you know, don't put your hand in the lion's mouth. He bit you once before, don't do it again. And we don't want to do that. So that's, that's really all I have to say. We need to think, we need to cooperate, and we need to be unified. Thank you.
We're still in Citizens Forum. Do I hear anybody else?
Hi, Jasmine Rivas, 40 Rogers Street. I'm also a town counselor, and I have worked in the school system for Dr. Villar, before Dr. Villar. And I've also been, I'm part of the advisory board for the receiver. As a leader, we are elected by our community to represent the interests of our community. That means our students, our families, everyone. Questions, and hard, hard questions, right? Sometimes it's not, it's not easy to be a leader, or everyone would be a leader if it was that easy. As leaders, if I go to the grocery store and someone asks easy. As leaders, if I go to the grocery store and someone asks me a question, sometimes people ask me really difficult questions. That is part of being a leader. And if we can all do it without getting paid, right? We're volunteers. Dr. Valar gets a very hefty and a, and a, and a large salary from our school budget to do the job as a leader. And as a leader, tough questions in a school system that has been in disrepair for a long time, even before he came, that's part of the job. The commissioner knows that that's part of the job as he appointed a receiver, several receivers that have come to this community. And it isn't about attacking, because no one's attacking anyone. We're asking questions that our residents ask us every single day. Students, teachers, I get, I get messages. Many of the counselors get messages. I'm sure many of you get messages. And you get people asking you questions. That is part of our responsibility as elected officials in this community to ask those hard questions. And it is the responsibility of the state appointed, the commissioner appoints the receiver. So if the receiver is not willing to come and answer those questions, then the commissioner should in effect be here to answer these questions because we have a right to know. It is public information. Our residents pay taxes into a system where 50% of our budget goes to the school. We all know this. This isn't new information. But hard questions are part of the job. And a lot of times, what they tell us in, in any corporation or in any company, if you can't handle the tough questions, then you can't do the job. That is part of being a leader. Being confronted by tough questions that need to be answered. Questions about the budget. I was offended for you that you didn't have a budget with line items. I have been on a school board. That is unheard of. Subcommittees, there should be subcommittees. That is how you learn as a school board, where the experts from the school system come in and talk to each group, each subcommittee. Subcommittee on curriculum, you get to ask questions about curriculum. That is how you learn. That is part of the training. But if that doesn't exist, it's really difficult for you to learn any of those things if you're just getting a tour of a school at four o'clock in the afternoon where parents, and I completely agree with you, um, uh, committee member, Murch, that is insulting to working parents who would like to participate in this process. They have a right to participate. And it is the responsibility of all of us as leaders, including Dr. Valar, to be able to show up and be asked tough questions. It's part of the job. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience have any questions? First, I'd like to say, it's very nice to be on a real school committee who have differing opinions. And yes, we should have differing opinions. And we listen to each other. And then we would come to a decision. Um, we have no right at this point in our careers, in this point in our committee, to make any positive decisions. But we've come to one conclusion. It's communication, communication, communication. And we're guilty if we're running into Dr. Valar's office and going, shh, 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 shh. He needs to be here. Happy to, when we do the agenda, these are the questions that are going to be on the agenda. And for us to hold to those questions, we have a question that we want to ask, then we will ask it at the next meeting. We could do that. And then everyone would hear the same answer. The community would hear the same answer. All of us would be on the same page. We don't all have to agree, but we need to have the same information so we can make, when we're allowed to, make our decisions. Employees in every company in the whole world have to deal with people they don't like. I've had bosses that I like. I have bosses that I really didn't like. But the whole object of a committee is that those of us with different opinions work together to come up with one concrete answer. And we're not all going to like that answer. It's like any election. People run for office. This one gets this many votes. This one gets one more. They win. It is a democracy. Okay, there's one other thing I want to say. This is Teacher Appreciation Week. I would love to give a round of applause to all of our teachers. They are awesome. Does anybody have any comments they'd like to make for our positive, for our teachers? Wally? Andrew?
In my personal opinion, teachers are like the second set of parents. And they know just as much about our kids as we know in a lot of situations. And, um, they have such an immense impact. And I mean, I, I, unfortunately, I just lost my, literally my first high school teacher, the first classroom I stepped into, she passed away from cancer recently. But that was 15, that was 19 years, oh God, that was 19 years ago. And I walked into Ms. Bragg's classroom and the tough love, the motivating, motivating me to keep pushing forward. Um, there are only a very few select people that can do that to a collective of children. And those people deserve to be teachers and deserve to be congratulated for their hard work. And I, I appreciate every single teacher in this district. It, it takes a special kind of person to make that special kind of impact. And, and I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Do I have any motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Anyone opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.